Okay, I'm gonna call as soon as order the Moncler City Council. And we'll begin with the invocation and pledge allegiance. And who is doing the invocation today? All right, come on up, please stand everybody.
Thank you.
Pastor Lance from Trinity Lutheran Church just down the street. Grace, mercy, and peace to you from God, our Father and Creator, as well as blessings from your brothers and sisters at Trinity. It is a privilege to be here with you this evening. The invocation. Almighty God, even though there is much diversity in tribe and creed, heritage and belief, we are of one race, the human race, dwelling together on one planet. Grant us unity in our diversity. Give us courage and strength to stand together, loving and caring for each other. God, I also pray for good stewardship of the resources of the city and for wisdom and discernment for the city leadership to make good choices and all those dedicating their lives to the care, service, and protection of all the people in this amazing community. God, please guide, protect, and bless those that the citizens have chosen as leaders and also those that have chosen to be leaders and protectors of the citizens of Moncler. I thank and praise God for each and every one of you this evening and for all that are gathered here. And in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. At this time, can you take the roll call Andrea?
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'm here.
And Mayor Dutre.
Present. So again, I just want to announce that anybody who wishes to speak, there are Y cards over here. You can fill out the Y card, speaking card request. You have five minutes. And you'll present the Y card to Mr. Michael Diaz here. Mike, you can raise your hand, please. And the city clerk will call upon you. I'm gonna ask that, please be seated. We can't have people standing in the room for fire reasons, fire marshal reasons, so please find a seat. If you can't find a seat, please stand outside in the lobby. We also have it up on the video there. If you want to speak in the lobby, we'll make sure you get a chance to get in the room to speak as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So as I said before, we're gonna hit the consent calendar real quick. I'm gonna ask councilmembers, do you have any items on the consent calendar you wish to remove? If not, can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion for the consent calendar as presented this evening.
You got a second from Councilmember Lopez. Let's do electronic vote. Okay, the consent calendar is adopted by a vote of 5-0. Thank you. So at this time is public comment. This is an opportunity for members to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Obviously, we just adopted the consent calendar. You wish to speak to the council, you have five minutes. Please understand under the California Brown Act, we cannot respond to items that are not on the agenda. If you're on the phone, you hit star nine on your phone if you wish to request to speak. If you're on Zoom, you would just hit the hand raised button there to request to speak on Zoom. Again, if you're in this audience here, the council chambers, please go ahead and get a Y card on the left here, to my left, and you'll give that to Michael Diaz to request to speak. So I'm gonna ask the city clerk right now if she has any speakers. Mike, before you ask, how many speakers do you have Andrea?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so okay. And then do we have any speakers on Zoom right now? I can't tell. Doesn't look like anybody on Zoom wants to speak.
No one's raising their hand on Zoom.
One's raising their hands on Zoom, okay. All right, so this is an opportunity again for members of the public to speak. I'm gonna ask again, if you're standing, please be seated. I know the room is okay right now, but just be seated if you can. If it gets too crowded, we're gonna ask you to sit or go outside. So Andrea, go ahead.
All right, our first speaker is Mr. Bill Kaufman.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, city men, I guess, and women, I'm back again. I won't take as much time because I think you have a lot of people that are going to speak. I want to let you know a couple of things. Did everyone get their revenue? Okay. And you can see the amount of money we're talking about as far as revenue goes. We did secure a good location on Central and Marino, the old Chase building there, that they're willing to lease to us. Secondarily, and I don't know who's gonna look into this, but passing an ordinance in the city really isn't a requirement with everything the state has laid out. But, and the method that I'm going to try to utilize, and we'll see how it goes, is applying for a business license and backing that up with about an 80-page document that stipulates adherence to state law, financial ability, experience, background checks, and so forth, so that every single thing that the city may be considered will be in that backup. And I'm gonna probably do that. Now, having the staff you have, it's, to me, if you look at it realistically, it's just a commodity. The commodity is no different than shoes or something else. It's, it just happens to be that emotionally, a lot of people are bent against having a cannabis dispensary. But if you look at it realistically, they're everywhere and you have so much revenue that you're just leaving. I mean, you're talking about millions and millions of dollars. And I think that, and I'll be available, and I've been interfacing with Mikey Puentes and so forth, in figuring the best and most economical way to go. But one thing I'll say, and I'm gonna get out of here, these consultants that are out there, I mean, I've looked at them, by and large, none of them have ever been in the industry. They study state law and they spout out about state law, but the experience and their ability to see who should be and who shouldn't be, and I can tell you that most consultant groups, not all, but there's a lot of skullduggery. And people will find a way to pay somebody or pay more than somebody to behind, actually behind doors, to say, okay, we'll do this for this amount of money. Other than that, I'm gonna go ahead and concede the podium to this group of people.
Great. Thank you very much. Have a good day. I say good evening. Okay.
Our next speaker is Jordi Ubaldo from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, city staff. My name is Jordi Ubaldo. I'm with the Moncler Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to, again, just our monthly reminder and invite you guys, if you're available. We have our E-Waste event happening on Saturday, March 25th, and Sunday, March 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. over at the Chamber office. So if you guys are available, have any E-Waste information, go ahead and share that with family members, residents. We'll be sharing that through our social media. And thank you guys for sharing that as well. Followed by our networking breakfast on Thursday, April 13th. It's gonna be over at the Moncler Police Department at 8:30. And we're looking to secure one. We've already secured one of Norma Storres' representative, and we're looking to have her there as well, being part of the breakfast. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Jordi, real quickly, Jordi, is the chamber selling tickets for the March 24th multi-chamber mixer?
No, we are not.
I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Gomez.
Hello, sir.
Oh, good evening.
Nice seeing you again.
Edward Gomez, representing Moncler here, the Town Center Estates on Howard and Central. So the whole complex, the HOAs, I'm the one they pushed me out to come out here. So anyway, just wanna review from last meeting on record about the Howard, the Street Howard, between Ramona and Central. And that's the Street Howard. A lot of, you know, fast traffic that we're trying to get that in control. And I was talking to Monica about what we can do. So I just wanna see what, if any progress on that, to see any updates on slowing that traffic down. Because, you know, we have a school, elementary school by Ramona. And I know they're gonna put a turnabout there in the future, so. And I was thinking about maybe digging some big potholes, but I don't think we approve that, so. Anyway, that was number one. Number two, Chief, we're talking about the late night racing on Mission and Central. If we can have a little more patrolling there on that area, because the residents, they keep calling me. And please, okay, I'll come in the meeting tonight, so. You know, about the racing and all that traffic on Mission late at night. If we can, you know, do something about that. We need some help there to calm down the racing late at night. And the third one would be, if we have another idea on when they're gonna open up the gym. Because a lot of our senior citizens are getting a little chunky. So if we could find out when we're gonna try to open up that gym. It's been about two years now. Yeah, a compliment.
You're making me hurt. Stop with the jokes.
But, so I wanted to find out more about that, about when they're gonna open the gym up, the facilities. Because I know they're waiting for, I don't know, it's been a long time, year and a half, two years. And we're, and they keep telling us they're waiting for parts. And we're willing to take a collection, whatever we can do. But the seniors are yelling at me. So anyway, we just wanna thank you for all your help and for our great city here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
All right, next is Sandra Trinidad.
Hello.
Hello, good evening to everybody. All I wanna say, I want justice for my cousin and I want them to release the body cam footage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Abraham Rojo.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for letting me take this time to the podium. My name is Abraham Rojo, and I'm speaking on the behalf of my brother Antonio Ibanez. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, if you guys are aware what happened to my brother Antonio Ibanez and what took place on March 5th with the Moncler Police Department. They brutally beat my brother to death. They used tasers and a baton on him. Today, I am here because I am speaking on the behalf of my brother who can't even speak no more. And now my family has to think about laying him to rest because your police department couldn't handle this the right way. We are here as our friends and family to ask you guys as a council member to do the right thing and release the body cam footage. Why is the police department taking this so long to release it? My brother was a born-again Christian who worked for Caltrans. Whatever they did to go in there and racially profiled him should or not have happened. He should be here eating, he should be at home speaking with my mom, who can't even be here because she's psychologically going through so much emotional stress, which is why I'm right here on behalf of my mom and my brother. And I'm just trying to keep my cool and keep it civil, because that's what we gotta do, you know? We can't lose our cool in this type of moments. We gotta do what we gotta do. And the fact that they looked at him and racially profiled him and they thought that he had no family members who cared for him, that they thought he was this, whatever they racially profiled him as, that was not, what they did was cruel and inhumane. And the fact that my brother was a believer in God and he also praised America and Back the Blue, it just hurts me deep down inside even more because my brother, he didn't deserve to go out like this. And my family and my mom do not deserve this psychologically and emotionally stress we are going through right now. And the fact that the Moncler Police Department thinks we're gonna forget about this, sweep it under the rug like nothing happened because they probably thought he was homeless or whatever the case may be they saw. No, I'm not gonna let this go unheard of and I'm gonna do everything I can in my right to make sure we do whatever we can, the civil right way, to get that body cam footage so we can see what really happened. The witness, who's a friend of my brother's and a friend of the family, doesn't even wanna come out and speak because she said the police department was basically intimidating her because of her, because of her immigration status. That is not right. Everything they did, they violated every type of rights we have as humans and as American citizens and those who don't even have rights. Because they're afraid to speak up, they're afraid to pull out the phone. And this is why I'm here today, because, you know, they think we're gonna, oh, let's just sweep him under the rug because he probably has no, he probably has no family members, he probably has no friends. But the thing is, my brother, my brother touched everybody's hearts. Why? Because he was such a strong, he was such a strong believer in the Lord that he went around to churches, he played the piano, he sang on Sundays. He did what most people wouldn't do in low-income families that would want to turn their lives around. And the fact that the police department of Moncler did this to my family when we were trying to break out of that stereotype and now we're just basically being made an example of? This is not right. It feels like a movie to me. And me, as a sag-afters member of the film industry, it doesn't feel real. But I'm gonna do everything I can and I'm gonna use all the resources I can. And I hope you guys do the right thing to release the body cam footage. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maritza Ramirez.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I'm Maritza Ramirez. I'm speaking upon the Ibanez family. On March 5th, police received a call for assistance at the home of Tony Ibanez. There was no one in danger, simply a call for assistance. They beat him to death, they tased him. He fell into, the doctor said he was brain dead. The family pulled the plug. And we call upon the city of Moncler to release the body cam footage. We need to conduct a thorough investigation into the beating of Tony Ibanez. His name's Tony Ibanez, remember it, please. We demand justice for Tony and his family and for all of those who have suffered at the hands of police brutality. It is time for us to come together as a community and demand change. We must hold those in power accountable. And I leave you guys with this poem, city councilmembers. If we wanted to, people of color could burn the world down for what we have experienced, are experiencing, but we don't. How stunningly beautiful that our sacred respect for the earth, for life, is deeper than our reach. Remember his name, his name's Tony Ibanez.
Buenas noches. Disculpen que no se va a hablar muy bien, pero mire, yo vengo a decirles que ustedes tienen el deber de disciplinar a la policía. No toda la policía es mala, no toda la policía ha hecho lo que le hicieron a Tony. Él es mi sobrino. Pero como ustedes, yo veo que es...
Can Mikey do interpretation Spanish?
Yeah, I'll let him go ahead and do that.
Okay, do you need a mic, Mike? Gracias señor. Go ahead, Mikey, if you wanna. And this will be a 10 minutes, by the way. Five minutes for each language.
Me disculpa, pero me interrumpieron porque ya estaba entrado. Pero mire, estoy diciendo igual, ustedes que están aquí sentados, usted tiene que disciplinar a la policía para que no conse, vuelva a suceder lo que pasó con Antonio.
He's saying what occurred shouldn't happen again and the police should be disciplined for it. Not all the police are bad, but just those police officers who were involved in it.
Porque lo que hicieron con Antonio, no se lo hacen ni a un perrito que lo agarra uno, lo papacha. A él llegaron y le dieron hasta que murió.
Because what they did to Tony is something that you would never do, not even to a small little dog. They grabbed him and they hit him and that's not something that you would even do to an animal, let alone a human.
Yo tengo fe de que ustedes hagan justicia por Antonio porque él, ahorita ya no está con nosotros, pero él era una persona buena.
I know that I have faith that you guys would do the right thing and even though Tony's not here right now, I'm talking on his behalf.
No nomás por Antonio, hay que hacerlo por aquí el estado, la ciudad, porque todos están mirando para todo el mundo. ¿Qué van a decir aquí, que son, cómo son los policías son de bola de batones? No.
We're not just doing this for Tony, but we're doing it for everyone in the state because everyone is looking at us and we need to set an example that this shouldn't happen.
Porque la policía está para cuidarnos, para, no para matarnos.
Because the police are here to protect us, not to kill us.
Disculpen de todo lo que he dicho, pero me sale de corazón decirles que por favor hagan algo para que no vuelva a suceder todo esto. Y también les pido, le ruego, no le ruego, les exijo que den las cámaras que traen los policías para que vea quién está correcto.
I apologize for what I'm saying, but I'm speaking from the heart and I beg you to release the body cam footage.
Como vuelvo a repetir, hay policías buenos y policías malos. Dentro de ahí están las policías malos que le hicieron del daño a mi sobrino.
There are bad cops that did what they did to my nephew, but there's also good ones.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Disculpen.
Thank you, gracias. Thank you, Mikey. Go ahead.
This is Alika Valdez? Sorry if I said that wrong.
Alika Valdez?
Aloha, oi, Alika Valdez. My name is Alika Valdez. Thank you for having me here tonight. From what I see about Tony Ibanez, about what's going on about him, it's really inhumane. You guys need to release the body cam footage on these police officers, please. This is not right. And if I did something just like that, I would release the body cam footage. Why not? I mean, I was raised in Hawaii. I'm from Honolulu, Hawaii, okay? And I was raised the old-fashioned way. You guys, I bet you guys were too, right? And my family admits to everything, most of my family. I admit to my problems, I confess. And there, like he said, there's bad cops that lie and there's good cops that really spread it out, guaranteed, right? So that Monday, you guys don't release the body cam footage. Monday, someone will confess. What goes wrong, comes along. Mahalanoi aloha, gracias.
Next is Eden Anamorado.
Hello, mayors and councilmen.
Go ahead.
Hello, mayors and councilmembers. I want you to look at this case as if it was your family member, as if it was your brother or as if it was your son. In the state of California, police go through a minimum of 24 weeks, which is six months of training. A barber has to go through two years of training. Yet, the Supreme Court has shielded these public servants from liability for their misconduct, even when they break the law or violate some of its constitutional rights. Police are not the judge, jury, or executioners. We seen what happened to Tyree Nichols in Memphis, and I'm hoping that this is not the case. So what the public wants is transparency. As public servants, who has their salaries paid by the public, I think it's right to show that. So we're also, the public is also asking for the release of the names of these officers. It is imperative that we know if these officers have priors, because usually when situations like this happen, they do. And also, the release of the body camera footage.
Right, next is Humberto Guizar.
Good evening, distinguished councilmembers, mayor. My name's Humberto Guizar. I'm a civil rights attorney. Been litigating these cases for 37 years and have a lot of experience in these cases. And it's not often that a human being is killed in their home, in their home where they sleep, where they want peace, was killed in his home, okay? And you have not released a body worn camera yet. That's very suspicious. Because I know in this, in this city, there have been cases where people, people have committed crimes and you catch them on a video. And immediately, the same night, they release those videos. But here, where we have some police officers involved, you are refusing to release the body worn cameras. You were elected by the people from Moncler to represent them and speak for them and act as a liaison for them against the police. I know they work for you, I know you consider their salaries, you make decisions that affect them. But the public is the ultimate person you serve. This belongs to the public. This house, this council chambers, belongs to the public. It doesn't belong to you. You are here to serve the public and I demand that you release the body worn camera immediately so we can see what happened. And if something happened that warranted the behavior, then we'll know. But without that knowledge, the people are left to scream and demand justice. And that's what we're here doing. And we're asking you, please, to release the body worn camera.
Next is Christian Contreras.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. My name is Christian Contreras. I have the honor and the privilege of representing the Ibanez family. Abraham Rojo, of course, and Tony's other brother is here as well. Maria Ibanez could not be here today based upon her being in such distress. Not too far from here, about a mile and a half on State Street. Antonio Ibanez lived and rented a room from a woman. And on March 4th and going on to March 5th, there was a call to law enforcement, there was a call to the police. However, there was no one in danger, there was no one who had been harmed, there was no one who needed immediate assistance of the police. However, the police went to the scene and when they got there, again, they confirmed no one was in danger, there was no emergency, and there was no immediate need to intervene in a situation, in a situation where Antonio Ibanez was in his own home, where he sleeps, where he seeks refuge. And what happened was these officers from the Moncler Police Department... from the Montclair Police Department, they entered the home. And upon entering the home, they began using force. And not only were they using their hands and their fists and their arms, they were using batons, they were using tasers. And there were not just one or two police officers, there were multiple police officers who then converged on Antonio Ibanez, Tony. And Tony was there helpless, being beat, being tased, being essentially just bombarded by these police officers. And of course, any regular human, any person who is human would be subjected to a medical emergency, and that is what happened. Tony went into cardiac arrest. He was taken to Montclair Medical Center, not too far away from here, and he spent the next 12 days there. He was declared brain dead shortly after arriving there. He was fighting for his life. He was fighting for his family, and his family was right there next to him. So he suffered. He suffered every second, every minute that he was in that hospital. Until finally, 12 days later, his family ended the suffering. His family said enough is enough, and he passed away. Tony is dead. He passed away last Wednesday. So what do we know about this case? What do we know about the police? We know that the police can only use force when reasonable. Police could only use force when they are being faced with the threat of bodily injury, when someone is evading arrest, when someone is doing something which is necessary for police intervention. But here, again, there was no one in danger. There was no one who was subjected to anything which warranted this type of police interference, right? But despite that fact, the police went in there, and they used force, and they used it excessively, and they went beyond the reasonable measures that they're allowed to in this country. The law is clear. The law says they could only use force when reasonable under the circumstances. Is it reasonable to beat someone? Is it reasonable to tase someone? Is it reasonable to beat someone with batons? Multiple police officers. Is it reasonable that eight police officers went up against one person? The answer clearly is not. It is not reasonable for that to happen. It is not reasonable for someone to be subjected to that. And that is how we know that the police officers acted unreasonably. And what are we left with? We're left with an entire community. An entire community here and family who is ripped apart, who is left to pick up the pieces, not knowing what to do. So we ask you all to do the right thing. We filed a Public Records Act request eight days ago. So by law, pursuant to the government code and the Public Records Act, you must respond at least in the next two days. And you are required by law to provide the names of the officers, any investigative materials, and anything in your possession to the public. And I know the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department is investigating, we know that. And I know you can't say.
How much time you need, sir?
I'm wrapping up.
Okay, go ahead.
So just, at the very least, at this point in time, we ask that you release the names of the officers involved, the body worn video, and anything else that gives some sort of comfort at this time to the family and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, this is the last card I have. Daniel Silva.
Daniel Silva, I'm sorry, Daniel Silva? Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Daniel Silva. Oh my God, what I'm hearing tonight takes some courage to speak out. We need justice. So I'm a former longtime Montclair resident, graduated from Montclair High, class of 2009, and I'm here for Antonio Ibanez, his family, friends. He's my longtime friend, and it hits different when he's your friend. My thoughts and prayers goes to everyone here who's affected, the entire community. Man, it takes, it hits different, you know, when it's close. I do, we demand justice. Please, release the body cam. Please hold those responsible, accountable. That's all I ask for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, you have anybody on our, anybody else? I'm sorry, first. Or anybody on Zoom?
I think that's it, yeah, no more cards.
Okay. We're done with public comments then? Okay, well, thank you very much for everybody being calm. Obviously, this matter is under investigation, and we will let that proceed as the investigation is going. And as a result, we can't have any comments. I know there was a gentleman that spoke earlier, Edward Gomez. You still hear Edward? Edward's not here anymore? Okay. So with that, I'm going to take about, let's take about a 10-minute break. I gotta use the men's room real fast, and we'll convene after that. So let's say we'll convene at 7:45. So we'll take a recess. 7:45. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. And so, as I stated before, we already did the consent calendar. So we're now on the council workshop. And we have a proposed council workshop for April 3rd at 5:45 regarding the parks and recreation master plan. So no objections, so ordered. We'll now go down to communications, and I'll start with human services. But there's no human services here. So I'll start with the city attorney then, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're going so quickly, I have to catch up with you. I just have the one item as indicated in the agenda. It's to ask that the council meet in closed session regarding pending litigation in the Gavilanis versus Montclair matter. Other than that, I have no items this evening.
Great, thank you very much. City manager?
I have no items, but I do want to apologize for the fact that Mrs. Richter is not here. She's out taking care of a task and should be back momentarily. There she is, right there. So she can do her presentation now.
Okay, Mrs. Richter.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I just wanted to give you an update on some upcoming events. So one of our partners, Feeding America, will be providing a food distribution this Thursday, March 23rd, in the Montclair Community Center from 12 noon to 2 PM. First come, first served, or while supplies last. To qualify, you need to bring a valid ID and be a resident of San Bernardino or Riverside Counties. The commodities change month to month and may include canned meat, canned vegetables, canned fruit, and other food staples and frozen items. Second item, our summer basketball program is for our youth in first to eighth grades and will be held from May 30th through July 22nd, 2023. Our first day of youth basketball registration will take place this Saturday, March 25th, from 8 AM to 12 noon in the Montclair Recreation Center. If you miss Saturday's sign up, don't worry. You're welcome to register at the Rec Center any day, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 AM to 7 PM. The last day to register will be Friday, April 21st. Cost to register is $40 and includes your team jersey and medal. Finally, just a reminder, make sure your calendars are marked for our upcoming Easter extravaganza. Community event is scheduled for Saturday, April 8th, from 9 to 11 in Almahoffman Park and the Montclair Community Center. Remember to bring your own bag or basket to collect your candy-filled eggs, while supplies last, at a variety of Easter-themed games. Prize eggs and an opportunity drawing for a large Easter basket for children's age 12 and under will also be available. In addition, there will be photos with the Easter money for $3 per photo and $1 using your own camera. And let's not forget, the Ontario Montclair Kiwanis Club is sponsoring a pancake breakfast for $5, which includes two pancakes, two sausages, and one juice, of course, while supplies last. Additional sponsors for this fun event include the City of Montclair, Women's Club of Montclair, the Montclair Police Officers Association, and the Montclair Firefighters Association. We hope to see you there. That concludes my comments. And, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you, Marsha. And they all sound like very exciting events, as usual. I will go on as mayor under communications. I just want to recognize, I know we've had a lot of graffiti in Montclair, so I know that the code enforcement and the public works department have been out there trying to bait the graffiti. Obviously, police department too is trying to apprehend those folks. But I just want to commend our staff for not just dealing with it, but dealing with it immediately and getting it off the streets immediately. So it seems like it's a growing, it's been growing the last two years. And so again, I appreciate staff's work on that. I also want to state that earlier today, I was in San Bernardino at SBCTA, and the Federal Transportation Authority Administration, excuse me, of the US government granted about $65 million for the West Valley Connector project. This is a bus rapid project that will start in downtown Pomona. Will go along Holt in Montclair. Will go all the way to Ontario, to the Ontario Airport. From there, goes on Millikan, will go past Ontario Mills, into Rancho Mungo. Will go to the Rancho Mungo Transit Center, and then continue on to Victoria Gardens. This will be 18 buses. They will all be battery electric, so it's all green. The buses will be stored actually here in Montclair. That's where they'll be charged. There'll also be a charger in Pomona, downtown Pomona. And what this bus rapid is, basically, has less stops, which means it gets you quicker from point A to point B as you're going. So this will be called the SBX Purple. Yes, there is an XBX in San Bernardino. However, in Montclair, it's going to be at the curb. It's not going to be in the middle of the street. When you get to Benson Avenue in Ontario, this is not Montclair, this is Ontario. But Ontario decided they want in the middle of the street, so it'll be in the middle of the street along Holt in Ontario. And then it goes back to the street curb again, yeah, on Milliken, going towards Rancho Mungo. This project will probably be in service starting sometime in 2025. And then finally, I just want to wish my wife a happy birthday. March, Wednesday will be her birthday, and it's a birthday. I won't say how old, but it's a birthday. All right. I'll start with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I just want to say quickly, we breezed through it earlier, but I had the opportunity to sit through the Community Activities Commission in their consideration of the requesting organizations for the community benefit funding program. And they did a fantastic job determining how to appropriate the money to the organizations that benefit our community. And because the council recently approved a, an increase in the funding, all of the requesting organizations received either what they asked for or more than they asked for. And these are fantastic organizations that really make our city what it is. They help our seniors, they help our youth, they help our students. And without these types of programs, our city would just not be Montclair. So kudos to the CAC for sitting through and making a determination of where the money should go. I think they did a fantastic job, and I'm glad that we approved that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. First, I would like to publicly congratulate our CAC member, Diane Wells, for being named Montclair Woman of the Year by Senator Susan Rubio. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because it was a limited audience. But I really do want to commend Ms. Wells for all of the work that she does. Not only is she a CAC member, she delivers meals on wheels. She's a ser optimist, helping to make blankets for the children in San Bernardino County who are entering the foster care system. There are about 2,000 children a month who go through that assessment center in the county of San Bernardino. And under Diane Wells' leadership, the ser optimists have already donated 161 blankets, and it's an ongoing project. We're going to keep supporting the children of San Bernardino County who are going through foster care. And secondly, as some of you may know, Golden Girls was supposed to have their opening ceremony a couple of weeks ago, but due to torrential rains, they had to cancel it. But it has been rescheduled now to April 1st, so I hope we'll see you on Golden Girls fields. That concludes my comments.
About April Fool's Day? Okay, all right. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My colleague, Ms. Johnson, just touched on Golden Girls, their opening ceremonies on April 1st. I'll also piggyback on some of the funding groups that are beneficiary of our Community Benefits Assistance Program. It's great to see that Christian Development Center is getting $2,000 more than they asked for. Montclair Meals on Wheels getting an extra $500. Family Foothill Shelter getting an extra $500. Just as a personal story, about a month ago, my father and I had come across, mainly my father, an individual that was in need of homeless and housing services. And we reached out to Pastor Don and Ethel Rucker, and they came through in helping this gentleman get some housing. We provided some clothes and other toiletries and necessities. But they connected him with the county and were able to get him housed, even if it was temporarily. At the time, it was raining cats and dogs in sheets and torrents. And that individual was able to get off the street for a good chunk of it and into housing. So I commend Christian Development Center and all the other groups as well. I've had some personal dealings with Foothill Family Shelter with my prior employment at the Upland Chamber of Commerce. And they're a great organization that actually helps the homeless, gets them rehabilitated, get them a job or connected to job training and get them on their feet. Instead of just giving them a handout, they actually give them something, the means to live by. So I appreciate that. On a side note, Meals on Wheels, for those that may not know, in 2017, the entire Meals on Wheels program was in danger of being eliminated because it was on the chopping block of the Trump administration. And I remember as a resident writing to the Trump White House and other folks that I knew in government, stating that that would decimate about 350. What's the number? Do you know the number of residents?
It varies throughout the month, but they're their own independent Meals on Wheels program, their own nonprofit, so they're actually separate.
But nonetheless, the number of residents that are dependent on that service, that would have been eliminated for Montclair residents that are dependent on that. And I'm glad that that program was kept in place, and it was not on the chopping block for the duration of those Trump years, and it's now continuing even in the Biden years. So it's great to see that. On March 24th, there is a multi-chamber mixer at the Ontario Rain. The following chambers are our own Montclair Chamber, Chino Valley Chamber, Fontana, Inland Empire Regional Chamber of Commerce, Temecula Valley, Myrieta, Wildamar, Rancho Cucamonga, Upland, and the Corona Chamber are all joining together to buy tickets at Toyota Arena on the 24th to watch the game. I don't know what team they're playing, the Ontario Rain is playing. I can see the logo, but don't ask me who it is. But I hope I can attend. And then I will, for the next couple council meetings, be bringing this up just as a reminder, a heads up, get a jumpstart on things. Tuesday, April 11th, starting at 5 AM. Tuesday, April 11th through the 21st. So that's a 10-day closure of the westbound Central Avenue off-ramp for 10 days, the 11th through the 21st. Then the 18th through the 28th, the westbound Central on-ramp will be closed. So please be prepared, Montclair residents. Adjust yourselves accordingly, come up with detours. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I believe, I believe I'm done. Thank you, sir.
I'll let you put that on Facebook, and you can get all the positive comments.
Sure.
I'll do it. Okay, Councilmember Rue. I actually called you a council member, did I?
Yes, on Saturday, the 11th, I did attend the in-district oath of office for Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez. It was fairly well-attended. I was glad to be able to represent Montclair and many other activities I'm involved with. Good turnout. He did have the In-N-Out truck there, for those of you who might have been interested. And it was a great day, and it was good to see the assembly member. This is his last term, so we'll continue to look forward to working with him. Last Friday, I attended the Gold Line Tour at the Pomona Station. This is on Gary Avenue. It is very close to the MetroLink station. Some of you will recall when it was the old Amtrak or Santa Fe Depot, which right in that neighborhood. They're about 68% complete to, from Glendora to Pomona, so that's a good thing. I know that all of our legislators in this area are supportive of the Gold Line. We have a representative Senator Rubio in the office, in the chambers tonight, and I know that the senator has always been supportive of the Gold Line because it runs through a good portion of her district, now including Montclair and Pomona. And we will get it to Montclair. It takes a little longer, but we're going to do it. This is Women's History Month, and you already heard them mention my good friend and neighbor two streets over, Diane Wells. We're, I've known Diane for so many years. I remember with Ser Optimist, when she was doing the speech contest with the young ladies, and it was wonderful, and that goes back to the, I think, 96, 97, sometime in that frame. So Diane's been very, very active in this community, and she just deserves it so very much. I want to thank Congressmember Torres for some of the appropriation she's, I won't go into all of it tonight. She's been able to bring into this city. I attended the appropriation ceremony in Fontana last week, as did councilmember Johnson and Mayor Dutre. It was very nice to see all of her cities coming together. This is our tax money coming back to us, so it's all a positive. Yesterday was St. Joseph's Day, the Swallows return to Capistrano. You've already heard about Golden Girls, we talked about the CAC and the many, many organizations we're able to help. I've been the liaison to the CAC Committee for probably over 15 years, and I, I appreciate the good work they do. And then just a last note, a Montclair resident, Francisco Obregon, did pass away earlier this week. He was a member of our Lady of Lourdes, neighbor of mine on Caroline, and just a very, very good, humble man. Truly lived the American dream, came here with nothing and a home, two very successful sons, his wonderful wife, Rosa, and that's what this community is. It's people who just live the American dream every day. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I, I just want to respond. Bill, I, I believe you'll be attending the LA Metro meeting on Thursday. You'll be at the board meeting, and Tenece may call in that day with staff to assist you. And I forgot to say something, too, an event that I went to, not this Saturday, the past Saturday, when Bill was at, Bill was at the Assemblymember Rodriguez event. This was the Miles from Montclair High School. This is where the students from Montclair High School walked the city to raise money for families who had a disadvantage. So I was there, got a lot of students that walked that day. I believe this is the 13th year of the program. Unfortunately, it's been, this is the first year of the program since the pandemic, and this program has raised basically a quarter of a million dollars in its first, at least the first 12 years. I'm not sure what it raised a couple of weeks ago. So with that, we'll go to.
Mr. Mayor, this is quick, this is the first or the third Miles from Montclair that I've missed, so out of the 13, I've attended 10, and you're right, it's, it's wonderful. I've made sure, I've made a donation every year.
Good.
And this helps our students who are homeless.
Yes.
And we should never have homeless students, period.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we're going to go into closed session. I'm going to ask staff to make sure that when we do come out, we'll all come out to the dais here and that, you know, we keep the lights on, make sure that we come out here in the dais, okay? All right, and it should be, I suspect this might be a, a short closed session. Thank you.